Okay, good evening, everybody, and welcome to the Village of Woodbury Village Board Meeting for February 11th, 2021. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance and a moment of silence for all those lost to this pandemic. I pledge allegiance.
United States of America into the Republic, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice.
Okay. We don't have any public hearings this evening, so we're gonna go right after public comment on agenda items only. Is there anyone in the public that would like to say anything on agenda items?
Ian?
Yes, hi Neil, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Good, thank you, nice to hear from you. How many I help you this evening?
On the property maintenance that you're gonna be discussing later. Traditionally is usually the billing department takes action after a member of the public or someone has filed a complaint. And it's awkward often for people to file a complaint against a neighbor or something like that. And I'm wondering if, I don't know if it'd be appropriate to put it in the law, but that the building department can take independent action on acting on property maintenance issue without waiting for a complaint coming from somebody in the public.
So you're saying to put it in the law, it might be a good idea to put it in the law that they can take independent action. Kelly, can they already do that?
They can do that, yeah. This is just a way so, you know, neighbors can file a complaint and there's an investigation process. But if the board wants it in there to be more clear, we can talk about that when it's later on the agenda.
Yeah, I just think it would be it would be easier to maybe do it if you did that because oftentimes neighbors will call and say something, but they have to then file a written complaint. And that becomes difficult with, if you're out barbecuing with next door to your neighbor or something in the backyard, if you file a complaint against them.
Okay, thank you Neil, anything else?
No, that's it.
Anything from Robin?
No, just listening tonight, thank you.
Thank you, Robin, always a pleasure to have you. There are only a couple of others, Kate, Eli and Eli, that might be two the same person twice there, either anybody else have anything? On agenda items? Okay, we will move on to administrative business. Looking for a motion in a second to accept receive the minutes of the meeting held on January 28th, 2021.
I'll make that motion.
Trusty Jack Gomaz with the motion and trustee Burek with the second, any discussion? All in favor? Looking for a motion in a second to approve abstract 17 containing vouchers 201370 through 2201440 totaling $261,278.76.
I'll make that.
Trusty Gomez with the motion. Trusty Graziano with the second, any discussion? Favor?
Aye.
Fire Department membership updates, looking for a motion in a second to change the status of the following individuals from active to inactive with the fire department effective immediately as requested by Chief Brazillo. Jack Davis, Mark Wilson, Devin Smith, Dan Begbie, Michael Kling, Christian Javier, and Eugene Perron.
I'll make that motion.
Trusty Jack Gomaz with the motion.
A second.
Trusty Burek with the second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye, thank you, moving on to old business. I'm gonna have a discussion decision on sale of property at 24 Cat Scale High Rail Section Block and Lot Number 254-7-1. So the assessor, as we all know, has advised us that the fair market value for the property is $1,500, it's $1,500. So I'll be looking for a motion in a second to adopt the resolution that we have to authorize the sale, release, and transfer of any interest of the village in certain real property.
I'll make that motion.
Trusty Jack Gomaz with the motion and I saw trustee Gomez with the second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Right.
Aye.
Moving on. It's got the decision of introductory local law one of 2020, heavy duty Tony. There was only one written comment received on the law and it was after the comment period had expired. It was from Richard Saragian, did I get that right Kelly? Yes, close enough, representing Loyal Tire and Auto.
Saragian.
Saragian, I'm sorry, thank you. Richard Saragian, representing Loyal Tire and Auto Center and Apple Automotive, Inc., AKA Apple Autobody, and contained additional comments from that which he made at the public hearing held on January 28th. So the letter included a lot of the comments that he made, but there was some additional comment in there as well. So first, the question is, would the board like to consider amending the law to incorporate any of the suggestions made from those comments received? Anybody wanna have anything to say on that?
And if, yeah, go ahead.
If it makes it easier for the board, I can also take a look at some of those comments and advise you which ones, you know, would be appropriate and things along those lines, but I leave it to the board.
Well, one of the, one of the options and suggestions that I was gonna have as well was to have Kelly do that and just review those comments and see what we might want to include it. I have my thoughts on one or two things, but I just wanted to see what the board wanted to do with that. If anything.
I'm okay moving forward with the law as is. Kelly, can we come back and amend it if need be?
Yes, you certainly can come back and amend it. An amendment will require another public hearing.
Okay.
So we're good.
Trusty Gomez is good, trustee Graziano, what do you think? Excuse me?
No comments.
I missed, I got kicked out, so what was the comment that was made?
Well, the comments were submitted in writing, which mirrored the comments that he made at the public hearing, but also he had some additional comments that we saw in the letter. Did you have any question or thought on anything specific that was in the letter?
No, it was very thorough.
Okay. So the question on, one of the comments, one of the thoughts that I had that I thought made a little bit of sense and I made notes on this last time was that one of the points he made was that he didn't feel that equipment had to be on every truck, that it could be on just one of those trucks that was responding. Did that make sense or resonate with anybody? Tara's nodding her head. Jesus is shaking his head. I'm just trying to interpret here.
Um.
Is anyone alive?
No. I think the law is fine and if we have to make amendments, we'll just go back and do it.
Tim, what else did you have that you wanted to?
That was really, that was really the biggest thing that I had. Alright, so with that said then, do you wanna make a motion, Jesus? And I imagine that motion would be to authorize Attorney Norton to, actually, actually, do we wanna just go and vote on this, Kelly? Thoughts?
If you're not making any changes, you would do a vote and that would be a roll call by Desiree. If you wanted to see changes, I can present that to you for your next meeting.
Right, so I'm okay with making changes, but if the propensity of the board wants to just move forward, then I'm okay with that as well, so I'll ask for a motion to move forward with this law and then have Desiree do a roll call. So.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, trustee Jack Gomaz with the motion, trustee Gomez with the second.
Just to be clear, this is a motion to adopt the law?
Yes, this is a motion to adopt the law.
As is?
Wasn't clear, yes, as is.
Okay, I just wanna make sure I have the right thing. Okay, so a motion to adopt the law.
That's what it seems like the board wants to do, so in the interest of, you know, clarity and moving forward, that's what I'll ask for the motion for. Okay, so we have the motion, second, any discussion?
So the motion to adopt the law as?
As is, correct. Do you need to, you need to identify who made the motion in a second again?
Nope, I have that.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor? And I vote aye. Chris, thank you, Desiree roll call please.
Mayor Egan?
Aye.
Trustee Burke?
Aye.
Trustee Jacomaza?
Aye.
Trustee Gomez?
Oh, we lost her.
No, she's there.
Can you hear me, I said?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Wow, yeah.
Trusty Gomez, I said trustee Gomez?
Yes, here, yes, aye.
Trusty Graziano?
Aye.
I don't know if it's my internet or what, sorry.
Alright, I believe that was unanimous, okay, motion passes then.
Okay, before you move, wait, before you move on, because I didn't realize that was gonna happen tonight. You guys have to set a permit fee for this new permit that you created.
Right, the discussion, if I recall, was double the regular permit fee, is that not right?
Yeah. From the heavy tow.
1,500, am I remembering that correctly?
So three, so 3,000 would be the permit fee for a heavy tow permit?
At the board's discretion, that's what I remember from discussion.
That's.
We could go, we could use 1,500 for that. You know, we could do a variety of things, what do you guys want?
Isn't it currently 1,500?
For a regular tow, we're talking about the heavy duty tow.
No, I know. I say 3,000.
Good, leaving it at that, 3,000. Discuss this, do you need a motion on that?
I would like a motion.
You do, yeah, we have to, we have to amend the fee schedule to include it.
To adopt $3,000 is the permit fee for heavy duty tow. I'll make the motion. Thank you, trustee Graziano, trustee Burek with the second, any further discussion?
No.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
And I vote aye. Kelly, any additional comments or thoughts on this before we move on? Thank you. Okay. Yeah, that went a little differently than I thought too as well, so I'm with you there. Alright, so receipt of bids for improvements to the Adams Street Building, Desiree, you wanna go ahead?
Sure, hopefully y'all can hear me, my internet works. The bid opening was held on January 26th, 2021 for proposals to do interior renovations at the building department building located at 19 Adams Street. The public notice was printed in the Times Herald Record on December 25th, 2020. And the following bids were received and the amount I'm reading includes the alternate option, and there were quite a few, so you got very good response to your bid opening. Icon Construction Group from White Plains, New York, $397,361. Standback General Construction LLC, $413,042. Renew Contracting Restoration, $427,001. Barone Construction Group, $427,600. ZN Construction LLC, $429,365. Vinco Builders LLC, $469,000. Walkill Group, Inc., $474,000. Page Contracting Group, $487,700. Meridian Construction Creation, Inc., $489,227. Grace Contracting and Developing LLC, $500,000 even. NUA Construction Corporation, $697,101. Berthoud C. Contracting, Inc., Seacrest and Sons Corporation, SNL Plumbing and Heating Corp., $806,250. The architect.
It didn't sound like you read the amount for Seacrest and Sons unless I missed that. Sound like you went right to the.
I will say it, if I didn't, I'm sorry, $796,460. My apologies if I skipped over that. The architect has a pin that the quotes we see are very competitive and they came in lower than what he called was about $700,000. He does not believe this price will be seen again in the future. And just to note, the bids are only valid for 45 days, so the board will need to make a decision how to proceed by either awarding or rejecting the bids no later than their February 25th meeting. I know Kelly has reviewed the low bidder package, I don't know if she wants to say anything about that. The low bidder documents were in order.
Okay, thank you, thank you Desiree and thank you Kelly. So we have two choices here, we can reject the bids and do nothing, or we can accept the lowest bidder or any other bid that you guys wanna accept and make up the difference with the fund balance and as we all know, we do have that money available, so that would be about 150,000, just under that 147 and change from fund balance, correct Desiree? Yes, she's nodding her head.
Yeah, we budgeted, I think the entire budget we put for this was 250, we used some of it for the roof. So we would have to use some fund balance and we also had budgeted some of that money for improvements to the existing village hall to accommodate a executive session room or another conference room. So we would have to, you know, scale back some plans, but yes, we would have plenty of money and fund balance to accommodate the difference if the board chose to pursue.
Alright, so.
Desiree, just so you know, we lost Jesus.
I thought I saw somebody drop off, I wasn't sure, thanks Kelly for noticing that.
Thank you, Kelly.
Is this, okay, Chris.
Does this bid can include the work in the existing town hall?
Village Hall.
Village Hall?
No, this is, this is just for the Adams Street. The existing, the work at the existing village hall is really quite minor, it's just taking the room that the building department clerical staff is in and putting in a temporary if it's temporary, but a simple wall in the middle so that the records room can be in the back and the conference room can be in the front. And then we're trying, we're just, we wanna discuss with you about doing, I don't think it's, I don't know what the technical name is, but almost like a banker's window where my desk is so that the public can just come to the window instead of coming into the building since we'll only have two employees there at a time. Sometimes one, sometimes three, because it'll just be my office and not anyone else there, so for safety reasons, we wanted to create some, almost like a drive up window kind of thing for the, because the only people who'd be coming there really is to pay their water bills and taxes. Because it's money related, we wanna have some kind of safety concerns in.
You want to create a, sorry, you want to create an area in the middle and add a second set of doors over here too, so that that back window would be inside?
No.
Or we're just a little bit not doing that?
Well, we, we were talking to my staff and we could talk about this later, obviously, but we're trying to come up with a way to do it where it's least expensive and also not doing any changes to the building itself.
So you wanna put that banker's window over here where your window is over your desk?
The one next to my desk, yeah.
I see.
Alright, but none of that's in this bid, so that's for another night.
Mayor's office would be where now, no.
So currently in the building fund, I thought it was 300,000, that includes the money for village hall renovations?
We budgeted about 50 for that. And then 250 for the building department building, which is redundant, but that's what we're calling it. We did the roof, which was about 50.
Yeah, yeah.
So we had 200,000 remaining. So my estimate, because the low bidder was 397, so let's just call it four. So 200 would come from fund balance to offset the cost.
And there's no credit in this bid, the roof wasn't in these bids?
No.
No, this is just interior.
The roof came up after the fact.
I just wanna make sure what's in the bids, in the exact bid package.
Can we look at the bid package? I don't know who, yeah?
I was about to say that, thank you Tara.
Yeah, I kinda thought that was sent to you.
We got a summary.
Oh, the actual bid package was, the architect did not send that to you guys, okay, I did not know that, I apologize. Yeah, I can, we can do that, like I said, you have until the next meeting to make this decision anyway. So what I will do is I will make sure that he sends you, it's like really thick and like huge. And they're actually in the office if you wanna see them, but I'll see if he can send them to you digitally as well.
Why don't we do this then, let's, let's do that, whether we review the bid packages as person here in the office or digitally. We'll do that and then we'll table this until the next meeting, because we have that much time to be able to make that decision. That way we have enough time to consider everything. Chris is on board with that, I saw.
I'm on board with that, yeah.
Andrew, Tara, okay, sounds like a plan, alright, so we'll just table that until the next meeting.
And again, I apologize, I assumed either the architect or someone from the building department would have shared them with you, but I will make sure you get them tomorrow.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for reading all of that, those. Alright, so let's move on to new business. We need to schedule a public hearing, so I'm gonna be looking for a motion in a second to schedule a public hearing to be held on March 11th, 2021 at 7:30 PM to entertain public suggestions for projects to be applied for grant funding from the Orange County Community Development Grant Program in their fiscal year 2022. We do this every year and we've had some good suggestions in the past. So can I have a motion in a second to, for that public hearing, please?
I'll make the motion.
Trusty Graziano with the motion, trustee Burek, second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I vote aye. Okay, next up is tax cap override, again, something we do every year. The tax cap for 2021 to 2022 is 1.31%, it's even lower than it was for this past fiscal year. Also, like every year, we need to pass a tax cap override law in the event that a proposed budget exceeds that amount. We're of course looking to work to stay below the gap, the cap, but we're in the early stages of the budget process, so with that said, can I have a motion in a second to adopt the tax cap override resolution?
I'll make that motion.
Trusty Jacomaz with the motion, trustee Gomez with the second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Now vote aye.
Hang on, hang on, I know you adopted, I know you adopted the resolution, but you probably should state that the hearing will be held at your next meeting, which is February 25th at 7:30 PM, it's in the resolution, but.
Is there a mistake in this resolution, because why would you publish it in the March 17th issue for a February 25th meeting? Says kindly published below on your March 17th, 2021.
That, yes, I will correct that and I apologize for.
No, 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 I made sure it's the right thing.
No, yep, no, I copy and paste from the previous year, so I'm gonna pull that up right now. And last year, you guys had it in the first, the second meeting in March. So I will change this so that it's February 17th, not March 17th, I apologize. Thank you for letting me know.
Do we need to do it, we don't need a roll call for that, do we need anything?
No, because that wasn't part of the, that wasn't part of the resolution, that was only the public notice, so it's fine.
Very good. Okay, moving on, return of restoration bond, we're gonna table this restoration bond resolution on Central Valley Property Management until the next meeting. The applicant needs to still prove that the stormwater maintenance agreement has been filed with the county before we can approve this reduction. Next item, introductory local law three of 2021 property maintenance, we have several resolutions, several votes rather to make on this. So first, I'll be looking for a motion in a second to introduce introductory local law three of 2021 to amend chapter 240 of the village code entitled Property Maintenance to update the law, which the board finds to be reasonable and appropriate. This update is determined to be an exercise of the police powers of the village to protect the public health, safety, and general welfare of its residents.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, trustee Jacomaz for the motion. Trusty Gomez with the second, any discussion? All in favor? And I vote aye. Next, I'll be looking for a motion in a second to declare the Village of Woodbury Board of Trustees as lead agency under SEACRA for introductory local law three of 2021.
Make the motion.
Trusty Graziano with the motion, trustee Burek with the second, any discussion? All in favor? Third, need a motion in a second to type introductory local law three of 2021 as type one action under SEACRA.
I'll make that motion.
Trusty Jacomaz with the motion.
I'll second.
Trusty Burek with the second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
And I vote aye. Based on the full environmental assessment form we received, I'll be looking for a motion in a second to adopt a negative declaration for introductory local law three of 2021. Trusty Graziano with the motion. Trusty Burek, any discussion? All in favor? And I vote. Okay, lastly, I'm looking for a motion in a second to schedule a public hearing to be held on February 25th at our next meeting at 7:30 PM to entertain public comments on introductory local law three of 2021 entitled Property Maintenance.
I'll make that motion.
Trusty, you're a header hand up first, so I'll take the motion from Tara.
Thank you.
And we'll give trustee Jacomaz the second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, next up, we need to schedule a special meeting for interviews for the fire recruitment coordinator. So we need to schedule interviews for applicants for the fire recruitment coordinator position. While we're discussing when we wanna do this, just keep in mind the next item on the agenda that we're gonna need to schedule interviews for the newly formed revitalization committee as well, we'll do that motion separately, but I just wanted to bring that up while we're discussing dates.
Calendar.
Calendars.
Yes, this would be a special meeting, you're saying?
Not necessarily, but it probably should be, because these will be interviews for, well, each of these two, one for a job and one for a committee. So probably should be a special meeting, yes.
Well, yeah, you'll be meeting as a board to do the interview, so it'll be a meeting.
I think what Chris was saying is, is can we schedule this at a regular board meeting or separately, right, Chris, I think that's where you go?
Yeah, that's what I was at, my.
That's what I.
Well, you need to let me know how long you, how many, how long you would like each interview to be held for and.
There are five applicants, so.
Off the top of my head, I think, right. So if you do 20 minutes, that's an hour and 20 minutes, right?
Right.
Hour and a half, whatever, so you want 20 minutes for each interview?
I would say more than.
I don't know, I'm.
I think that's plenty.
Okay.
It's 100 minutes though.
You want less?
Yeah, 20 minutes.
You want less?
This is an hour and a half.
It's 15 minutes.
Okay, so 15 minutes, all schedule increments?
Yep. When do you wanna do that, you wanna do it next week?
Okay.
Or the, or the week of the next meeting?
If we wanna do, start, can we start the next, anybody opposed to starting next meeting now early to cover this or?
I would say 90 minutes early.
90 minutes early, whatever.
Yeah. So we can do it on the 25th at 6 o'clock then, it sounds like that's what you're suggesting?
I'm just asking, with everybody else's preference.
The last time we did this, we were hurting.
Yeah.
No, if you do it before the meeting and then we have an attorney client, it's like five hours of seeing each other.
Yeah.
We don't necessarily have to have an attorney client either, I mean, we.
Okay.
But I don't disagree with you Tara, I mean, it seems a lot to do in one evening.
How about a Monday, is everybody free on Mondays?
Usually.
Yep. Monday's good. March 1st.
Monday's.
On a March 1st?
Yeah.
March, why not this Monday?
Alright, we can do this one.
Oh, not enough time now.
This Monday is a holiday.
No, no, I meant it's a holiday.
What about the 22nd?
On the 22nd, you have got plenty of time, yeah, you got plenty of time for the 22nd.
Okay, I skipped the week, I thought we were in that week.
Alright, so it's an agreement for the 22nd?
Yes.
At what time?
Seven, 6:30?
6:30.
6:30, yeah. 6:30?
Yeah.
Empty chair, oh, he's back.
Yeah.
Okay, so can I have a motion in a second to schedule the five fire recruitment interviews on Monday, March 22nd, 2021?
February 22nd. Everybody's mind is on March.
Yeah, well, I just heard March several times now, so February 22nd, 2021 at 6:30 PM.
Make the motion.
Thank you, trustee Burek for the motion.
I'll second it.
Trusty Graziano with the second, any further discussion? And all in favor?
Aye.
Alright, alright, so now we do it all over again.
Just gonna say that.
Need to schedule interviews for the newly formed revitalization committee, so again, keep your calendars open, what do you wanna do?
And while you're looking at your calendars, how long do you want the interviews to be, 15 minutes too or?
Yeah.
I think 15 minutes.
15's fine, I, maybe the following Monday?
That works for me, oh, how many applicants were there?
No, there's a lot.
Yeah, I thought, it was a lot more than five.
So we need two. Do you think we need two days?
That's what I'm asking, I don't remember how many there were though.
Yeah.
Yeah, I would put it on Monday, Thursday. Further, I would put it maybe the 8th and 15th.
Well, Jesus was saying Monday, Thursday, Thursday that week is the board meeting, what were you saying, Chris?
I don't know, the first week in March. Alright, well, or the 8th to 15th. And then take a little time between so we can make decisions on the fire people and before we start interviewing other people, maybe the 8th and 15th might be better.
I like that.
There were, there were 10 letters, just so you know, 10 letters.
Alright, so March 8th and March 15th, both at 6:30 PM? Anyone have any conflicts? So I should probably look myself.
So you want me to do five, five each night?
Yes.
Yeah, we got the gist of that. All right, so I'll be, I'll be looking for a motion and a second to schedule two sets of interviews for the revitalization committee, five on March eighth and five on March fifteenth, both at six thirty P M.
Well, let's not include the number of how many on each night, because once I call these people, they may, you know, maybe four and six, or.
Yeah, if you're six and four years, we'll be, we'll, we'll get with that.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, so we'll leave the numbers up to you then, Desiree. So I saw trustee Barrett with her hand up for the motion.
Yeah.
Please?
I'll second it.
Trustee Jacque Amazo with the second. Any further discussion?
I think we should, in between, oh, I'm sorry, I do have a piece of further discussion, but in between, we should probably send out another advertisement, because we were looking for eleven to plus people for this committee. We only get ten letters, so we should probably try to get a few more.
And we do that, Desiree? And do we have enough time? I don't know that.
Well, when we last, when we last discussed it, we were gonna interview the, the, the people that submitted letters, and then I thought you said nine to eleven people were on the committee, unless I'm remembering incorrectly. Was it nine to eleven?
So we were looking, I think, for minimum eleven. I remember eleven, and I just know we didn't get eleven people, so that's what I'm saying. We, we can interview, I thought that's what we discussed, but I just want to make sure. Sorry, Des, you're freezing.
I think it's your internet.
Yes, so I'm sorry, I'm, yeah, upper skyline, internet stinks. Let's work on that. Um, yeah, I, it's up to you. If you want to re-advertise, you have to make a motion to authorize me to re-advertise, and when do you want letters back by?
All right, so should we do this first set of interviews and vote on this, that we had the motion, then do it?
Yeah, we, we're in the middle of comments after the second motion, so we need to vote on the interviews first, and then we can do that. Then we can do that.
All right.
Any further discussion on the interviews? I mean.
Yeah.
All right, hearing nothing else then? All, all in favor?
Aye.
And I vote aye. All right, so now it sounds like we want to talk about advertising for additional people for the revitalization committee.
And if you'd like, you can make the deadline for that to be March fifth, and then as letters come in, I can add them to both either of those dates that you already have scheduled. It's up to you.
Fabulous idea.
Beautiful, love it. Excellent idea.
I'm glad my, glad my internet works so you could hear that.
That sounded like a motion coming from trustee Graziano. Was I correct in hearing that?
That's fine, yes.
Is that acceptable, Desiree?
Yeah.
Okay.
I just need a second.
Second for trustee Graziano's motion.
I'll second.
Trustee Barrett. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
And I vote aye. Okay, very good. Thank you all. Oh, let's see, where was I? Okay, we have two extra items this evening. One is with, in regard to funding the well monitoring consultant. So in twenty seventeen, several municipalities, of course, including ours, decided to hire and share the cost of a consultant to monitor the groundwater and stream on the Woodbury Creek Tributary of the Mudna Creek and to prepare periodic reports describing the influence of the Mountainville Wells on the Aquifer and Woodbury Creek. At this time, the account that this work is being paid from needs to be replenished. So I'm looking for a motion in a second to adopt the resolution that was distributed. Our, our share of that is five thousand dollars for the public.
I'll make the motion.
Thank you, trustee Barrett with the motion. I saw trustee Jacque Amazo's hand go up for the second. Any discussion on this or questions? Okay, all in favor? And I vote aye. All right, second of two extra items. We have a request to temporary, temporarily close Smith Clover Road. So we received a request from the We Are Woodbury Group to temporarily close Smith Clover Road on March thirteenth from Route thirty two to Valley Avenue, which is Peroni Circle, for them to hold a small Saint Patrick's Day parade. They'd like Smith Clover Road closed from one P M. to two P M. And Peroni Circle closed from one P M. to four P M. They plan to have Irish step dancers perform and bagpipers play. Everyone would be so, wearing masks and socially distancing. They're asking at this time if we'd be inclined to approve this request before they sort out the rest of the details, and considering the time constraints, that's why it's an extra item for tonight. But there's a few points that we have to consider. First, a parade permit may be needed from the police department. They would have to check with the P D. on that. In the past, we've had block party, block party permit fees of a hundred dollars to the building department. The cost of incurred overtime for highway personnel to close and then reopen the roads and areas requesting to be closed, like what was structured in the chamber when it hosted the farmers market in this area. It's approximately five hours from noon to five P M., and that cost in the past was two hundred and thirteen dollars and sixty cents. And lastly, we don't know if the town's been approached about the police personnel needed for the closure at the Route thirty two intersection. If they're not going to assist at that location, since it's a state road, we may only be able to approve the closure from Peroni Lane instead. So Kelly, I'm gonna ask first if that's accurate, and if so, then we'll open it for discussion.
That's accurate from what we had discussed earlier.
Okay, very good. So what are the thoughts? Andrew?
I'm okay with it. I think it's gonna be great.
I, I understand that, but what about the points that I brought up with regard to the cost to both us and to, and we have to get the police department involved, or they have to get the police department involved?
Okay, so if we waive the, waive those fees, I mean, it's a simple call to the police department, and if we waive, vote to waive the fees, I'm okay with that. What are we talking about? Maybe three hundred bucks total?
Well, from what I see, three hundred and thirteen dollars and sixty cents.
So that would be my feeling on it.
We just need to publicly discuss all of these issues, that's all.
Yep, absolutely, absolutely. So that's all I got.
I see two other people nodding their heads, and we're agreeing with Andrew, and I see Chris smiling. Is that the game?
No, it's not smiling. I'm, I'm not really, I, I don't know waving anything unfair for the taxpayers for anything, to be honest with you. That's my first point. And secondly, I want to make sure that we have some good social distancing, and, and you know, especially with the pandemic, you know, pushing with the new variants. I don't know, until we get a bigger swath of people inoculated, we gotta be careful. So that's kind of, I'm really able to kind of, in my head, getting anything together right now during, during this timeframe, couldn't, could not, could not end well. So we gotta be careful of that as well.
So let me ask a question, and, and this is amongst our number. Go ahead, Jesus.
Oh, we did it with the tree lighting. They're not pretty decent. Now, I extend Chris's point of view with March coming around and with the new stuff, but if that happens and Cuomo puts a restriction, then it'll be canceled like anything else. It's no big thing. And we've done it before, we can do it again. And if those issues do come up and they cause a problem, then it'll be canceled. Either we are, with our community. So I don't see it as a problem.
Okay.
No, okay, I just want to be fully a hundred percent transparent on what's going on out there. I mean, that's something we should be doing as a board, looking at all the angles and making sure we cover any contingency. Whatever we do.
And I agree with Chris on both of those points, especially the social distancing issues. I want to talk about that a little later, but I have a question, and I don't know the answer to this. Does the We Are Woodbury Group have funds to pay for fees like this? And now and in the future? I don't know the answer to that question, and this is for the board. I know, I know Kate's on here, but you really can't speak right now, Kate.
I believe, I believe they do, but Kate maybe can comment during public comment.
Well, that would be after, we'd have to make a decision, but.
Yeah.
If they don't, they have a little time to, to drum up some money, and they've always come up with it, so.
I raised that question in the interest of discussing openly in public, as Christmas talking about covering those fees, and I agree, it's a pretty small amount, but we do have to be transparent with the funds for the village, and I think that we have to be careful with regard to paying with village funds, taxpayer money for what would be considered a private event, because this is a request by the We Are Woodbury Group to close the road, and I see Kelly nodding her head, so I think I'm on the right track there. So I bring that up for that reason.
And keep in mind, they, keep in mind, they may incur fees from the town. If the town does approve the use of the police department
Right.
to close Smith Clover Road at thirty two, police department reimbursement for personnel costs will be a lot more than your highway.
Right, it's, it's more than the.
I don't know how much more, because I don't do that for them.
It's more than the parade permit. It is the overtime, the potential overtime for police officers, and that could be pretty pricey. It's gonna be, I'm sure it'll be more than what we're paying for the highway department.
Yeah, Kelly says, okay, but I just worry, I'm more worried about not the money for the taxpayers. That's more about worried about assuming liability if we assume the fees for, for the event, and that, that does the village assume the liability if anything happens at that point.
Usually you require some insurance if they're doing that on, on village streets so that that should protect you. But I think the other issue that was raised was making sure that the village doesn't do anything that might constitute an unconstitutional gift. Waiving a fee is different from making a payment towards something, so.
Oh, yeah, we waive fees on a regular basis for you. We used to waive the fees for the use of the meeting room all the time, so I'm, I'm not too concerned about waiving the fees. I am just, you know, there are things that we don't control, like the parade permit itself, the fee for that permit and police overtime. So we can control the fees for our highway department and, and for anything else that are related to the village, but and I'm okay with waiving those fees. These are just things that we have to consider and we have to discuss now. If.
Well, you should also be careful, because, you know, these are taxpayer, this is a private group.
Right.
And some taxpayer, I think it's a great idea personally, but some taxpayers may not feel that their taxes should be waived. Why should they pay the overtime for highway personnel for a private group event?
Let me ask you this, Des.
Just pointing that out.
And I appreciate that, and I'm glad we're, we're having this conversation and clarifying these points. But let me ask you this. Do we have time before the next meeting prior to this potential event for these issues to be ironed out or investigated so that we could make a decision at our next meeting? Is that possible?
My understanding is that the We Are Woodbury Group were just looking to see if the board would be open to this, to this happening so that they can then spend the time speaking with the town and the police department to see what needs to be done with regards, because I think they plan on lining up on thirty two and then coming down Smith Clover, so they would have to.
Actually, my understanding in a conversation with Kate was that they would want to line up in the administration building parking lot there, and they were gonna seek permission to do that. So not on thirty two. I think they were gonna exit out onto Smith Clover Road, not on thirty two. Just close, close Smith Clover at thirty two. That's my understanding.
Okay, yeah.
I, I have a question.
Okay, yeah, her, he, her email spelled it out pretty well.
If the board votes to close and we decide not to waive fees and We Are Woodbury cannot come up with the money, can't we just say?
But it's.
Never mind?
Well, my, I, I, I think that, I, I don't see any reason why not, but my question was, is there enough time before our next meeting for them to investigate these issues? Clearly, we're, we're, clearly, we're willing to hear out the argument to consider this possibility. Obviously, we're talking about it. So my question is, do we have enough time before the next meeting so that we could make this decision at the next meeting? Wanted to.
I, I mean, your next meeting.
Yeah, I would probably say that. Yeah, I would say that's better. I mean, none of us are against it, so I think we're all for it. I think having another two weeks, they're all the ministerial business taken care of, and, and the I's and T's dotted and crossed, then voting on it at the next meeting, it's still two weeks before the parade. So I think having a little small period to get all those pieces of business taken care of, knowing that the board's inclination is seemingly that everybody's in favor of it, just if we get those things taken care of, so it gives you two weeks to do that.
And this is why I wanted to have this discussion and do it now and get it on as, as an extra item. So I, I think we're all on the same page. I, I think that's probably what we should do. I don't think we should vote on it tonight, especially if we could vote on it at the next meeting and have it in time for the group. And in the meantime, We Are Woodbury can investigate these, these potential issues, and I'm more than open to having discussions with them myself, and, and we can try and make this move forward in the interest of serving the community. Does that make sense to everybody? Any further comments or discussion before we move on? All right, terrific. Okay, so that concludes regular business, unless I missed anything, so we'll move on to public comment. So I will call, I will call on people since there's only a few. Why don't we start with Kate Luciani? Anything, Kate?
Hey, Mayor Egan, and hey, everybody. Thank you so much for calling on me, and thank you for listening about this with the Saint Patrick's Day Parade. We do have money in our account. It would be something that I would have to go to the whole group and come to them and explain, you know, the cost and see if it's something that we as a group could do. So I appreciate you taking the time to go over this, and like I said, I will go over everything with the whole group. Thank you.
Terrific, thanks, Kate. Uh, the only other member of the public that I see other than department heads here is Eli Mahoney. Mr. Mahoney, Nathan? Okay, then we will move on to board member and department head comments. So tonight, I'd just like to briefly discuss the pandemic. After close to a year, everyone I know is getting COVID fatigue. Mask compliance is slipping. People are going out more. Social distancing seems to be less important to people, which prompted our discussion with regard to this We Are Woodbury event for March. But this is not the time to be complacent. We need to be strong in protecting ourselves and others. Several of us attended a funeral for a friend that died of COVID earlier this week. I've had a family member die. I think everybody knows somebody that's been touched by this pandemic. I know vaccines are hard to come by right now, unless you're in one of the early phases, and we're fortunate enough to, to get a vaccine. More and more vaccines will be coming online soon, though. So stay patient and stay vigilant. Please, 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 continue to wear masks and wash your hands. I know this is redundant, and people are tired of hearing those catchphrases like social distancing and wearing a mask and washing your hands. But these actions literally save lives. They truly do. So just please keep at it. Stay strong. Thank you, everybody. Let's move on down the row. Trustee Graziano.
All right, good evening, everybody. Thank you for coming. I'm gonna start off tonight by saying, you know, participation in our government is one of the most precious rights our country reports us, and something that none of us ever take for granted. Now, I'm not suggesting that everybody must run for political office, but I feel everyone should participate in some love. Whether it's attending meetings, asking questions, or just listening, an informed and educated community becomes a strong and successful community. So I implore going forward, everyone get involved, everyone ask questions, demand the answers, and be truly informed about what goes on in our local government. Next, I'd like to give a shout out to the men and women of our highway and water departments for what has seemingly been an endless battle with the snow lately. Keeping the roads clean and passable for our community has been a tall order, and our highway department has been up to the task. This also goes for the freezing temperatures that we've, that have seemingly dominated our weather recently. Keeping the water and sewer plants operating in top shape during conditions such as this is not an easy thing, and something I'm quite familiar with. So thank you again. Lastly, I'd like to say to all the wonderful people of Woodbury hanging there, the end is near. As Tim mentioned, keep vigilant with your masks and social distancing, get the vaccine when it's available, and together we'll beat the virus and get our lives back. I too look forward to celebrating with all of you at our wonderful parks, at parades, at barbecues, and at events, once it has become safe and appropriate to do so. So let's all keep our composure for a little longer, continue to protect all of our friends, neighbors, and loved ones. Remember, we are one Woodbury, and we need to work together for the good of us all.
Thank you, Chris. Trustee Gomez.
Thank you all for coming out tonight. Big thank you again to Rob. It'll be another thank you, Rob moment, and his highway department, who are doing a great job of keeping our roads up and running through all this snow, which I hope, and soon, this is, we've had a bombardment with snow here and there, and of course, let's keep an eye out on our neighbors, the elderly neighbors that need help clearing out their properties. And neighbors like me, who, of course, after twenty years of my snowblower working with no problem, it breaks this season, and I have to do it all by hand. So, you know, just give a helping hand where it's needed, and I always remember to choose kindness. And I thank you, and a please will go a long way. I also want to thank the volunteers from my fire department and ambulance corps for always providing great service to our community. Much without, thank you all, and thank the rest of all our departments in the so please, all keep safe and healthy so that twenty twenty one can be a great year of freedom, hopefully. Thank you all. Have a good night.
Okay, Jesus. Trustee Barrett.
Thank you, Mayor Egan, and thank you, everyone, for watching tonight. We just heard a couple of board members talk about how fatigued everybody is and how tired they are of COVID and staying away from people, and it's, it's getting to a lot of people, and people are letting their guard down. So you have to look at everything that comes our way and that's presented to us, that's taking your mind off of those things and, and bringing some joy to your life. So if there's one thing I teach my kids, it's that in life, no matter what the circumstance, they should always choose to be kind. And with everything going on, all the negative, all the negativity, all the ugliness. And with everything going on, all the negative, all the negativity, all the ugliness that exists around us, even making one person smile can change the world. Maybe not the whole world, but it will certainly change their world. We are fortunate to live in a community with everything going on, COVID and masks and people sick and passing away, that we still have volunteers who make it their mission to brighten our quality of life, and who choose kindness and to give with every decision they make and every event that they plan. They do not get paid, nor do they seek recognition. Their only mission is to give back to the place they love to call home. So with that, I want to thank the We Are Woodbury Group for putting a smile on everybody's faces around town these last few days, particularly with leaving Valentine's candy and cards for people to find, and seeing all of the, the posts on Facebook from people who are having miserable days, just saying, thank you for making me smile, thank you for making me my day, thank you for making a really tough day that much better. That makes me smile. This is a group of volunteers who are moms, they're dads, many are children, many work full-time, and they still find the time to give back. I am grateful to them for setting an example of what it looks like to be kind and to give without exception of receiving anything, without the expectation of receiving anything in return. Thank you to all of the members of this group who work as hard as they do to add a little something extra to life here in Woodbury. There's one quote in particular that comes to mind when I think of this group of people, and it's, and it is "For it is in giving that we receive." Thank you for giving so much of yourselves to this community. Also, be sure to look out for the Cubids that are gonna be around town this weekend. Um, the We Are Woodbury Group is gonna be giving out chocolates and candies to those in our local businesses, and it's gonna be sure to put smiles on everybody's faces, including the kids. So with that, I want to wish everybody a happy Valentine's Day, I hope everybody stays safe and makes some time to celebrate with their loved ones. Thank you and be safe.
Thank you, Karen, trustee Jacomaza.
Thank you, Mayor Egan, uh, good evening, and thank you all for attending, uh, let me begin by asking, is everyone praying for the end of winter already? The job of a village trustee or any elected official is not an easy one, especially when you're pushing an agenda you set forth during an election. An agenda of accomplishment, of making sure promises that are made are promises that are kept. The one thing I am thankful for is that when we face two plus straight days of snow, our residents can safely travel our roads if need be. So I want to take a moment to thank Rob Wyatt and our highway department personnel who helped Woodbury survive Smo- Snowmageddon twenty twenty-one. Keep in mind, even with the dusting or a light coating, there is work to do. We are very fortunate to have these men working for us. Let me also mention and thank our water and sewer department, Mickey Phillips and his superintendent, Mickey Phillips and his entire staff. The flow in and out from each and every home in Woodbury did not stop during this storm. Uh, water department personnel made sure that vital services were still being maintained during this week plus of snow. Uh, on that note, I also want to piggyback on what trustee, uh, Gomez said in terms of thanking our fire department personnel and our ambulance corps during that, this week, it was a tough week for the ambulance personnel because they said goodbye to one of their own, and an active member. Um, but, once again, they continue to answer the call when needed here in Woodbury. Um, this time of year is normally very stressful for our future graduates of the Monroe Woodbury High School. I know CJ and I have been very busy, busy visiting colleges online, filling out applications with our kids, and keeping our fingers crossed that the next chapter of their lives will be everything they hoped for. Now try accomplishing these tasks in a time of COVID, where visiting campuses is restricted or even completely prohibited, where you don't know if school will be open or remote. Uh, it's, it's a difficult time for these, these young adults, college for me was a wonderful time for growth, reflection, and enjoyment, and that was made because I went to Oneonta. So, friends I made in college are still friends with me today. It is a wonderful time, it was a wonderful time in my life, and I have so many great memories. To all our future graduates, I say, be strong. This too shall pass and life will return to normal. In the meantime, I wish you all the success in your future endeavors, and I hope the higher learning choice of your dreams becomes yours. Thank you, Woodbury, for joining us, and have a good night.
Thank you, Andrew. Alright, let's go to department heads, let's start with Desiree.
Uh, yeah, um, so several months ago, uh, I scheduled a meeting with Millennium Strategies, which is a grant writing company that, uh, trustee Jacomaza attended with me. And, uh, we were very impressed with them, and shortly after there, the village board approved contracting with them, and then not too long after that, we were awarded an almost a hundred and fifty thousand dollar grant for the fire recruitment program. Well, I was just informed, uh, late last week that we also got a small grant, two thousand three hundred eight dollars, which will reimburse us for COVID expenses that were incurred by the fire department. So, so far, this, uh, grant writing company has been very successful for the Woodbury, I think, in my opinion, and I'm, I'm so happy that the village has decided to sign with them. Uh, we had a meeting this week, uh, with some of the department heads and some of the board members attended, and we've made plans to apply for several grants this year that will hopefully will be successful in obtaining, that will help offset costs to taxpayers for projects, purchases, and improvements that are needed for various departments. And I'd also like to thank the We Are Woodbury, I came out from work today, and there was a nice little Valentine on my car door handle, which I thought was really nice, I, um, sadly had been told about it ahead of time, so I wasn't as surprised as some people were, um, which kind of took it away from me, because I was kind of like, oh, this would have been a nice surprise, but I was told about it ahead of time, so that was sad, but it was still nice to see, so thanks to them. That's it.
Okay, thank you, I wasn't sure if you were done. Chief Brazillo?
Uh, yeah, just a couple, probably four things, just to touch on what Desiree just said, uh, we had a deadline for tomorrow for a grant, uh, we do have a grant submitted, uh, requesting for a new tanker truck. Um, so just to piggyback on what she said, uh, hopefully, our fingers are crossed, hopefully that works out. Um, as far as fire department operations, we're still in, uh, you know, the COVID cruise control mode. Um, we are still offering online training for all our members, uh, there's no limit to how many classes they can take, but we have, uh, seized all in-person drills and meetings, and just been doing everything, uh, you know, remote and through Zoom. Um, the other thing, uh, all the repairs are made on the trucks, so all the trucks are back up and running, um, so let's keep our fingers crossed. And, uh, if any of the residents, if you guys can just push with all the snow that came and looks to be coming, if, you know, anyone with a hydrant in front of the house, since this is our so-called busy fire season, if they can just, uh, give us a hand digging it out and just making it visible for us. Other than that, I have, uh, nothing else.
Thank you, Pat. Uh, Chief Burke, anything?
Nope, no, Pat said it all, thanks, though.
Okay, very good, Rob?
I don't have anything, thank you.
Okay, Kelly, anything?
I have nothing, thank you.
Okay, I think I covered everybody. So with that said, can I have a motion for a German? Trustee Gomez with the motion. Trustee Graziano with the second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you all, and have a good night. Oh, and happy Valentine's Day.
Happy Valentine's.